Call this meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone for coming. Will you do a roll call, please?
Lyndon Baines.
Here.
Charles Cooper.
Yes.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Here.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Here.
We're all present.
Okay. All right, would you read the minutes, please?
Regular meeting for June 2018, be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Alderman met regular monthly session Monday, June 11, 2018, at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown, Tennessee, when the following proceedings were had and entered a record to with. Present and presiding, the Honorable Darlene Monday Davis, Mayor, Yeldishman Recorder, on a roll call vote by City Recorder, the following members of the Board were present: Lyndon Baines, Becky Duncan, Charles Cooper, Vanessa Matthews, and Elizabeth Pendergrass. Mayor Davis called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. The minutes from the previous meeting were read and on a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the Board on a roll call vote approved the minutes for May of 2018. Mayor Davis then asked, was there anyone from the floor that had any grievances, and there were none. Mayor Davis then reported on the Jamestown Airport event. It was well attended and everyone seemed pleased. She talked about the real lights and that the project was finished, but FAA wanted flight check done at night, and we would need to amend the project. Mayor also updated the Board on the, that the swimming pool was now open and that we would need to approve rehires and new hires for the season. Tom Bennett with Bennett Associates gave the engineer report. Bob Lane, City Building Inspector, gave the building and codes report. Bailey Allred, City Attorney, then gave the attorney report. Charles Cooper then asked about renting spaces for the 127 at the airport inside the fence area where the car show had been held. City Recorder says she would need to check with FAA to see if the rules allowed the city to do that. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the amendment of the real light project for the FAA flight check and regulator to be added to the agenda. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to amend the real light project for an amount of $16,500, with 825 being the 5% of the city's part for the FAA flight check and regulator to be replaced. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved ordinance 18, the 2018-19 budget on first reading with the City Recorder's pay being set to hourly from salary. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the RFQs to be requested for airport engineer. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the RFQs to be requested for auditor. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved for bids to be requested for paving of the city roads. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved May 2018 financial statements. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to pay the bills for May for $479,046.61. On a motion by Lyndon Baines, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the temporary hires for the gas line project in Wilder. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the rehires and new hires for the swimming pool, with no further business on a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board voted to adjourn.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes? As read, it says on mine here, April, you meant June, didn't you?
Yes.
So everybody changed that to June, because that should have been June. Oh, no.
Oh.
This part.
Can we amend this now? Is this when we amend these minutes? To show the pay increase for the employees to be added? I make a motion that we...
It'd be better for those to be in the original ordinance. I mean, the original reading, so that's probably good.
Okay.
So this is what we're putting it at now?
Worded as what?
So Freddie, you mentioned how we should word that.
Probably the original intention, or just stating the minutes, that the, that the intention was for the dollar raise to be across the board. And then that the intention was that the City Recorder would be, that that change would be amending the previous ordinance, which I don't remember the number.
Was it 16...
1680?
I think you're right, 1680.
Yeah, 1680.
So motion to amend the minutes to have the...
That the original intention was. It just needs to be noted somewhere, so people can refer to that. Some of these people uses their hands to talk, so I may knock it completely off the table. Okay, read us what you put down.
Motion to amend the minutes to have the ordinance 1680 amended to change Recorder's salary to hour.
Hour.
And to, and to include in the original motion the pay raise for all employees.
All employees across the board. Okay, so... Okay, we got that? All right, so this has been put in to amend those minutes, and this added to it. So that we have clarification on the pay raise and the City Recorder's pay raise. Okay.
I have a question before you go any further. Why are you changing the City Recorder from salary to hour?
Well, for one reason, she puts in a lot of hours.
Well, she did that when she ran for the job.
She didn't have to run for the job. She was hired in, so she wasn't like a, like, she didn't run for the job. But now, she does a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of financial stuff that Carolyn doesn't do, that Carolyn does the internal audit, and she keeps us informed on what we're needing to be sure to take care of and what not to take care of. But now, she has to do a lot of running, and especially if, if the guys are needing something, they're needing her to come and look at something, or what have you. Now, uh, well, I just think she deserves it, for one thing, so. But she does a lot of extra, so I don't have a problem with it.
Well, that's...
But that's for, they've already voted on that, and so that's for them to decide on what the, if there's something else different here we need to do, that's for the Board to decide. Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as read with the amendments? The amended minutes, so with the amendments that we, amended items that we needed to have in there to refer to, for people to go back to, so.
I've got Vanessa making the motion.
Yeah, she made the motion.
Okay, Vanessa made the motion. Is, uh, is there any discussion?
Will the budget reflect the dollar across the board? Will that change?
Yeah. Will the budget reflect across the board, dollar raise?
For everybody? Will it, will the amount change?
Will the amount change from what you guys already have?
I think it was, it was already added into the budget, the dollar was.
Yeah, I thought that was already added to the budget.
It was, it was already added into the budget, the dollar raise.
Is that what was added to the budget? Is that the way it was figured?
Yeah.
It was supposed to be, yes.
That was already figured in.
But when we had our budget meeting, because when we made the very first motion, because if I'm saying this right, to where we were talking about the raises, and that's when we decided that we done the, what we can afford at that time, correct? And then, we talked about doing the dollar across the board, and that this year's budget should have that reflection in it, correct?
Right, that's correct.
That's what we voted on before, yes.
Okay, but that was not what was presented?
In, right now?
No, that was not what was presented in the budget, in the pay, in the paid...
From last year's?
No.
You're saying it's not showing in this year's budget, but...
No. The, what do you call that thing? The employee pay? Everybody, what everybody was getting? That does not reflect a dollar across the board. For everybody.
I'm not sure I'm understanding on that, but... You're saying it is...
She's talking about mine. It's not different than everybody else's. Everybody else's is a dollar.
Is that reflected already in?
Yes.
That's reflected in the budget? And so, are you asking who are at?
But it's not across the board, then? Everybody's not getting a dollar. I just want to clarify that. Everybody is not getting a dollar. That's why I'm requesting an independent wage study.
Well, we're going to let her get the information, bring that back to the Board.
That's fine.
So that's the only thing, answer I can give you right now.
That's fine.
Okay. Do I hear a second to the motion? We had a second?
So this thing here, I'll just say that it's added to minutes, that everybody got a dollar, they got the raise and everything, and you got your raise, and all the employees got their raise, that's what it's saying, right?
It says, the motion by Vanessa Matthews to amend the minutes to have the ordinance 1680 amended to change Recorder's salary to hour.
Lee, yeah.
Yes. And include motion, and include pay raise for all employees across the board in, in that motion, in that motion that was made here. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Lyndon Baines, the Board on a roll call vote, approved 18, ordinance 1800, 1819 budget on first reading with the, with my pay changing from hourly to salary. She wants that to include that the employee's pay raise, and that we're amending 1680.
All right, I'll take it.
Okay, so the second is, Ms. Baines. Roll call, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Against.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
Four, four, one against.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, this is, anybody else got, this is usually Tom says, Tom, it's perfect. Anybody else got anything to say? If not, we'll move on. Okay. My report, I'm kind of out of breath, and I'm going to let these guys do their reports, and if there's something I think they missed, I'll add to it, just to keep from talking so much right now. So let's start with the engineers' report. Oh, I do want to mention about the jamboree, as I was the fourth, from one to nine, behind the courthouse on the Squire. It's during the 127 sale, and it's when the jamboree is what we usually have during that time. Okay, Tom, would you please, anything you need to tell us?
Yeah, just a couple things. The CDVG sewer project, the bid open is this Thursday. I hate to do, I always try to do that in advance of the council meeting. It just didn't work out that way, so that we can have an award ready. So what will happen is, we'll open bids, assuming that goes well, comes in within budget, we'll have to work with the state to confirm those bids, and then once that's done, recommendation reward will come back to this Board. We're pushing our time limit a little bit, because we want to be done with the project by the end of the calendar year, if possible, so we can resubmit next year. So I may be making a request for a call meeting for that, if you're able to do that, but let me just see what happens on Thursday with those bids, and then just go from there. Worst case, we'd have to wait till second Monday in August, and that's pushing us a little bit. It's a 120-day project, so again, I'll communicate with the Mayor once the, once the bids are open, and we'll get con currents from the state regarding those bids, and then we'll just go from there. But I guess, don't be surprised if I ask for a meeting, a special call meeting regarding those bids. The Main City Pump Station Grinder Project, that is substantially complete. They're working on pumps list items, the equipment's been started up. I'd love for you to see it, it's not a great place to go and visit, but it's a very unique piece of equipment. It seems to be doing what it's supposed to be doing, at least thus far, so that project is wrapping up. Should have the, have another manufacturer check in tomorrow, so we should be done over the next week or so, completely with that project. The, Scotty couldn't be here tonight, he asked me to update you all on the Wilder gas project. They completed the highway bore under 127, which was a huge victory. It was about 240 feet, using your new boring machine. And so they did get under, and now they're working with the welding crew, getting all the gas pipe welded up. Of course, the regulator station is in, so over the next little bit here, you'll start to see that.
It took them a while to get across the highway, underneath the highway, it took quite a while.
It did.
It was rock, rock, all the way.
It was very difficult, it's a very hard thing for the crew to do. So I was very pleased, very proud of what they were able to accomplish. And just a reminder, that was about $225 a foot on your initial bid for that work, so that's about a $50,000 worth of money, that's a... And they've also done several other bores, and if you've been out that way, you'll notice they've also extended the, the low-pressure side on Wilder Highway, they've made their way up through there. So there's been a lot of progress on that project since we last met, and they're continuing to work, excuse me, as the way for the...
And as I understand, that the new workers that were hired are doing a good job, that they seem to like what they're doing, and they're doing a good job, so it's what he told me, so. I went out there and looked at where they were at and what they're doing. At the time, they were trying to get across underneath the highway over to the, that area over there, wherever it hooks up at over there.
It's very difficult, you have to be eight feet of the highway, understand all that, so.
Yeah, it was a, it was a...
It's a difficult.
Very difficult thing for them to do, but that machine has been a lifesaver. So that was money well spent, money well spent. And in the future, it should be, it will have, it's already paid for itself, I think. Yeah, so...
That's what I had there, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, Bob Lane, City Building Report, just give us an update.
Two or three things. Of course, the mound house is slowly progressing along. Miss Matthews' house is not progressing along, we keep asking. It's later. The community center is just about finished, they like some hardware and stuff on the doors, those signage and apparatus for paper towels and that. And I'm working, still working on the grants. We've added some more participants, so I'm, I'm still on the grant project, and it's, we're trying a few out, so we'll see how it goes. That's all.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
All right, so this month, I'm working on 127 rental agreements. We found out that the FAA was fine with us utilizing that space for rental for the 127 sale, so I'm working on that, and then getting ready to start working on collecting some delinquent property tax. Let me enjoy.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I think Steve Brown's got good news for us. He came in this evening, and he said that the...
The bathrooms are finished.
The bathrooms are finished at the community center. So we plan to have a, I think that's the last thing that was being done on the main building, so we're going to ask the media to come out and either do an inside or do, you know, we'll talk about the building, what else is going on out the park, so we just need to set a date for that, and we can do that, so. And so we can tell everybody all the good stuff that's happened out there and everything, so. And as far as the, we should hear this next month on the splash pad grant, that, we should hear this next month on it, and where we ran on splash pad and, and the stuff done to swimming pool, and what have you. And, and I've got another project that's going to go in the future here, and I'm putting Martha Wiley in charge of it. Right now, we've got Jim Bug that is doing, heading up the project for the basketball court out there. We got a small grant from the Health Department, and he was working on the funding, getting the donations to finish up, to match that. And he really, I mean, when it's done, it'll be, it'll be money well spent, and it'll be done the way it needs to be done, so. And Steve, he coordinates with Steve, of course, Steve Brown, and Steve McCoy, you know, they coordinate with him, and we're constantly checking on that, aren't we, Steve? So that's, that's good. But I started to tell you about the new project, is I want to start on Jamestown Cemetery, that's the one that I want to put Martha in charge of. I've not, we've not done much talk, and we've not met, we've only, I've only talked with her about heading the project up. It's something she's really interested in, she's got a list of the names of the people that are buried over there, except maybe for all those that the stones are gone from, because when I was growing up, there was old rocks, that was headstones and footstones in that cleared area now, and that was early, early pioneers, and no names was on them at all. And so, over the years, as the city has cleaned the place, they've gotten rid of those rocks. And so just think of that, that there are other graves over there underneath that area. And the reason I know that is because me and half of the town kids played over there, played hide and seek around the, all the, we played, and it was, you had to come down my driveway to get to the cemetery, so. But we met over there, and we'd play hide and seek for an hour or two, you know, it was just, boom, we didn't bother with the graves, but we just played hide and seek behind because some of them would be and stuff like that. Just to inform you, that is a project that's coming up, and getting a group together on that. Hopefully, the Historical Society will be involved, maybe the DAR will be involved in that. Get some stuff going there, there, we will, there's a small grant the Health Department gives on walking trails, which that's going to be a walking trail from the courthouse over to the cemetery. That's what we're planning on doing, new fence around the cemetery, make it more, uh, look good. It's quartered off from, from any harm, because there was kids a couple of years ago, Steve McCoy, that they broke the, the, their headstones.
Twenty headstones, we had that.
Twenty headstones. Now, that's, so, but it will have access to it, and it goes across Martha's property, the celebration room for the celebration room used to live, Miss Edith, and so, and she's the perfect one to head it up, to get that done. And our involvement as a city will be to help get the grant. Of course, we already maintain the cemetery. We will do whatever cleanup help that they need, whatever is, you know, goes along those lines, whatever they're needing us to do. So it's a, hopefully, it will be a tourist attraction, any of us, local people, I'm sure has not been to that cemetery. I grew up in front of it and playing in it, but I'm sure there's a lot of people that've never been to that cemetery. But you've got Cal Austin's grave, you know, make historical markers, put a lot of information there, and hopefully, and so we started from the center, we cleaned the town area up, down there, the square, so we're starting going out in different directions, and try to get some of these things that will be asset to the county, or in the city too, and tourists that come in. Tourists love, I know when I go somewhere, I love to go to the historical stuff, I like to find out about the town, how it got to be there, and all that bunch of stuff, and I like to go visit all that historical stuff, and most people do, you know? So just wanted to let you know that's a project that will be coming up later on, you know, when we get that headed out. And we, we'll move on. Okay. We, we need to, do we need to go ahead and add these?
Do you want to do the oak business first on the...
The what?
The paving.
Oh, yes, the paving. Approval of the bids on the paving of the street, we're getting ready to start that, and so we need to get a, we have one bid, so Steve, do you want to talk to the Council about that?
Yeah, we received bids till 4 o'clock last Friday, and we received some bids from Rogers Street, and I think it's, is what it was. That's the paving. Streets is on there too, it's 122,000.
Which is under budget at the moment. May finish up a street, might, may, it just depends, you know? Make one street, we'll patch and finish up the street, you know, and get the whole thing done, but that's something that...
And if you've been on some of the streets, the crews has already been raising the manholes up on, get things to paving, so.
Yeah. And some of the streets we're doing in steps, so Taylor Avenue being one of those. Let me say this to the public, I will say this now, that yes, I am going to have my driveway paved, but the city is not paying for it. It's Darlene Monday Davis is paying for it, out of her pocket, and it is to help on the resale value of my place, and it's cheaper whenever they come past your house, happen to be coming past your house, do that paving, so.
Could we put that in the minutes, please, Gail?
I want everybody to know that it is not the city paying for my paving of my driveway. So I just want everybody to know that. I just want that made clear. All right.
But we was, we come in, want us to what we did, what we thought we did on, what we had, lay that page, so we got a good quote on it, a good bid.
Yeah, so it's, we're ready to start that, so we need, we need approval of the bids for street paving, so we can go ahead and get that started.
I make a motion to...
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanessa Matthews. Or do we have any other discussion? Okay, it's been seconded by Charles Cooper. Okay, it's been seconded by Charles Cooper. Okay, roll call.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, motion carries. Okay, now we're ready to, uh, we need to add some things to the new business part. One of those being is that one of our council people is, uh, Ms. Matthews is wanting to, uh, come off of the Planning Commission Board. And so, and Lyndon Baines, Councilman Lyndon Baines, has agreed to take that position. So I need a motion that, uh... The motion needs to be that he is replacing her. Is that correct? Is that how the motion should read?
Yeah, we need to do the motion to add it to the agenda.
Oh, first, we've got to do the motion to add. I get ahead of myself all the time. I get excited, I tell you. Anyway, uh, we need to add the motion first. So do I hear a motion, a motion made to add this motion to the agenda?
I make the motion.
Okay, Elizabeth Pendergrass made a motion. Okay, is there any discussion on that? Okay, it's been seconded by Charles Cooper. Okay, roll call.
Lyndon Baines.
I'll pass.
He, he's passing because he's the one that's been put in that position.
Yeah, that's all I'm doing, passing on it. Because my name's in there, I don't want to be...
Do I need to say? With Vanessa, because we're just, this is just to add it.
It's really more of an appointment than it is a...
Yeah, because this is just adding it to...
I don't even think you really have to vote on it. It's an appointment.
Okay, so...
I think you have to vote. Your mayor appoints the Planning Commission, but you have to vote on...
You have to vote.
The boards on the appeals. There's two different, young's got your boards together, which a lot of cities don't. The boards on the appeals has judiciary power, meaning they can overrule the council. Council can't change their decision. Maybe they can't overrule, but they can't change the proceeding. But the county committee of the city planner, Plan Commission makes recommendations. They have to pass policy.
Okay, so if we do this, the question is, do they both need to pass? Or can Vanessa go ahead and vote?
I think Vanessa can vote.
Vanessa can vote, but Lyndon can pass.
Yeah, I can pass.
He needs to abstain.
Right, that's what I thought.
Disobeyance, okay.
That's what I was going to do.
Okay, so he is, okay.
Charles Cooper. Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, and with Lyndon abstaining.
Okay, uh, motion carries. Okay, now, uh, do we need to add these others first? Before we vote on a motion, or do we go ahead and vote on...
I think we need to vote on each one on this one.
As we do it, okay. So now we need to vote on, uh, adding that to the agenda. I mean, to pass... Wait a minute, I'm getting myself mixed up here. Okay, we've already passed it, so it's added to the agenda. Now we just need to...
Make the motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Correct.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve at this point? Okay, motion made by Charles Cooper. Is there any questions at this time? Any discussion of any kind? Okay, uh, uh, do we, uh... Uh, need a second?
I make the second.
Motion, uh, second's been made by Elizabeth Pendergrass. Okay, do a roll call.
With Lyndon accusing himself.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
Okay, all four, with Lyndon accusing himself.
Okay, uh, we had talked about the, uh... About a side-by-side for the, uh... In work session, we talked about side-by-side for the community center out there to be used where they can carry trash off. It's easier, uh, on everything than using the big trucks in there. And so that they can, and other things that they need for out there. So, uh, is there a motion? I need a motion to add to the agenda to buy a side-by-side, uh... From quotes that he has gotten already. That's which we'll bring up in the next approval by, to purchase this. But we need to add it first, so I just need a motion to add this to the agenda to buy a side-by-side for the community center.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by, was it, who, who made it?
Becky.
Becky made the, Becky Duncan made the motion. Is there any discussion on it? Okay, seconded by Charles Cooper. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper. Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay.
And I would like to thank Steve for doing some research and getting us the best deal.
Yes, that's, that's good of you, Steve, to do that. That's, uh, what we need to do. Uh, do we have, uh... Now we can, uh, we do the roll call, right?
I do.
We've already done it.
Okay.
Okay, now I need a motion to, uh... I'll let Steve talk back just for a second. You want to talk about the side-by-side for just a minute? What it is, that you're getting it and just coming, I mean, you don't have to go into detail.
Well, what it is, is, uh, where we put all the new sidewalks and stuff in the park, it's hard to get back to the back shelter and everything. And we get a lot of tree limbs that are falling and stuff. And we have to haul them onto the other end of the park to get rid of them and stuff. And it's a lot easier to do it with a side-by-side than it is with a full-size pickup going through the park. It'll crack and break the sidewalks. We spent thousands of dollars on the sidewalks for handicapped people to get back to where it's at.
Okay, and so he has done bids. He has gotten bids on it. So this has come under, way under. It's a 2016, and it's come way under what any of the bids were, and it's under what it's worth, right?
Right.
Okay, so we are doing that. And this is, um... So I need a motion to, uh, that we accept the bid. The, I think it's what, eighty, eighty-five hundred? Eighty-five hundred for 2016 side-by-side, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I need a motion somewhere along those lines.
I make the motion.
Ask exactly what I'm, let's say what it is. Motion to, uh, make, uh, to, uh...
Accept.
Purchase the side-by-side for eighty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, we've got a, uh, motion being made by Lyndon Baines, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Vanessa Matthews. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? No discussion, so then do a roll call.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, the next item that we need to add to the agenda is motion to approve. We had gotten permission, uh, Councilman Cooper brought it to our attention about maybe renting out lots for the 127 yard sale. And, um, in the area where we cleaned out where the parking on the outside, FAA and Aeronautics approved it, as long as it's not inside the fence. And we've got that whole area over there where we had parking and we cleaned out. So I need a motion to add, uh, uh... To, uh, about the approval of the rental lot at the airport for the art sale.
I make a motion.
Okay, motion is made by Charles Cooper to add this to our agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, I need a second on it.
I second it.
Uh, okay, Vanessa Matthews seconded, uh... Was there any discussion of any kind? There wasn't, wasn't. And so, uh, do a roll call.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, so, uh, that has carried. So now we need to approve, the motion to approve the rental lots at the airport for the amount of, they'll be in a circle. The lots are all the same size, and they'll be in a circle where anybody can drive in there and park and be able to walk around that circle and, and stuff. And it's at, what, what was the price? Hundred dollars. Hundred dollars, at a hundred dollars, so...
We'll have eighteen, eighteen lots, fifty by one hundred.
Okay, eighteen lots, fifty by one hundred. And all you've got to do is call Mr. McCoy or call up your city hall. And, uh, we'll take care of it. Okay, motion, I need a, um...
You've got a sign out there for them.
Did we make the motion?
No, I haven't.
We not made the motion, so I need a, a motion made to approve of the rental lots at the airport for one hundred dollars a piece. And size is one hundred by what?
Fifty.
Fifty by one hundred. Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Duncan, and, uh, is there any discussion? Okay, I need to hear a second. Seconded by Charles Cooper. And, uh, do a, uh, roll call, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper. Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Okay, and, uh, actually, this next one that we've got going, uh... Comes under, it comes, it's a ten thousand. Normally, we wouldn't have to bring this to the, to the board, but we want to be as open about this as possible. That, uh, got a grant from the Health Department for five thousand dollars. Jim Buck is heading up that project where the, uh, it's from the Health Department, the grant was. And he's making up the money, gathering up money to match that and to finish paying for the resurfacing and new goals and things along that line for the basketball court at the community park. So I need a motion to add that to the agenda. Is that correct? We need to add this to the agenda? We do not. Okay, so I'm just making you aware of this because it does come under, come at the ten thousand. And so, but we want the board and the public to be aware of what's going on. So, uh, we do not need a motion for that one. Okay. And I talked about that a little bit earlier on. Okay, now, we're down to what we have already on the agenda, which is approval of the 2018, 2019 budget on the second and final reading. So, uh... Is there anything there already that we need to change? We just need to get approval for this?
On the budget?
Yeah.
Do we need to add that? On the second reading to let it reflect the same thing in the first?
Yeah. So, how are you stating that?
I would say, I would put it in the minutes to reflect the same, and put the statement again.
As the same as the first.
This will be swapped.
Okay. All right, so I need a, a motion, uh, to approve the 2018, 2019 budget with the reflections of the amendment.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion's been made by Charles Cooper. Is there any discussion? Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lyndon Baines. Uh, do a roll call, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Uh, Vanessa Matthews.
Against.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
Four, four, one against.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the approval of the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statement? If not, I need a motion to approve, to approve it.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion's been made by Charles Cooper. Is there any discussion? Okay, I need a second.
I second it.
Seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass. Do a roll call, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
And, uh... Need to read off the amount of the, I didn't do that, the amount of the financial statement just for the public to hear that, so I just forgot that little part.
The general fund is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents. Water and sewer fund is nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Natural gas is one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, with a total of three million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, of course, this has already been passed. I just wanted her to read that off so the public knows, uh, about what that amount was. I just kind of bypassed that for a second, though. Didn't mean to do it. Okay, approval of the monthly bills. Read that, uh, read what the bills are. I'm getting out of breath here.
The monthly bills are three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and eighty-one cents, including the natural gas bill.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the monthly bills for the month of, uh, June, uh... Is this, this is June, you have a...
Yes.
Yes, June bill.
I make the motion.
Motion's been made by Lyndon Baines. Do I, is there any discussion? Do I, okay, then do I hear a second?
I second it. I mean, sorry.
Okay, Elizabeth Pendergrass seconded. Do a roll call, please.
Lyndon Baines.
Four.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
And is there anything that I have forgotten that we discussed during the work session? I get ahead of myself sometimes because I get so excited about what I'm doing. And, uh, so you just have to forgive me on that. Somebody remind me, and it don't bother me in the least, so... If there's no more discussion, then I, I need a motion for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Becky Duncan. Is there any discussion? A second has been made by Charles Cooper. Now, I could be funny here because I'm feeling pretty good and say, do a roll call. We're not doing that. I will put you through it. Okay, just, I don't know, so... I, 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 I had all this, so this is making an adjournment. Okay. Thank you very much. We thank the public, sure do.